Good evening. It's Wednesday, November 6, 2024 at 6:30 PM. This is the City of Franklin Common Council. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Alderman Pecorelli.
Here.
Alderwoman Eichmann.
Here.
Alderman Hassan.
Here.
Alderwoman Day.
Here.
Alderman Barber.
Here.
Alderman Craig is excused.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, going up to item B, citizen common period. Again, we've got the rules of decorum at the front podium as well as printout on the side. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Three minutes maximum. I'll be the timekeeper. And if you're wishing to speak, and there's kind of a kind of formal line, so we're gonna move through it, please. We have a large agenda.
Good evening. My name is John.
Hey, just get right up close to John.
Oh, another one of these.
Right, just like today.
Yes, my name is John McGanskey, and this is Dorothy Reel. We have the President and Vice President of the Franklin Seniors Incorporated. Excuse me. And we'd just like to thank everyone for the the new budget we got. We really appreciate it. It makes us operating, our operating expenses a lot easier. Takes pressure out of us trying to juggle everything, and I'm sure you're all aware of that, what that's all like. And so on behalf of all the seniors in the committee, I'd just like to thank everybody for what you guys did.
Your support.
For your support. Dorothy, anything?
I I think you guys are doing a great job for us because without you, our seniors would not be able to have the the entertainment and the lunches and not only the lunches, but all the people that come and talk to us. And today we had the people from the roads giving information on all the road construction, and I think everybody was happy to find out we're gonna finally end it. But we appreciate all that. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Very much. All right, anyone else wishing to speak? Going once. No, we're gonna get moving.
Hi, Dana Gindt, 9011 West Hawthorne Lane. I just have a couple of questions. First of all, if someone could answer, if there's information included on the Planning Commission packet regarding a certain agenda item, shouldn't it also be on the Common Council agenda? Like the entire information, for example, the car wash has a sound study that's on the Planning Commission packet, but it's not in the Common Council packet. So I was wondering who, like, is that correct procedure or?
The sound study.
Please say that again.
Sure, so the, like, from, obviously, I've studied the Planning Commission and Common Council packets many times. Usually the Planning Commission packet, whatever's on there, I know there's hundreds of pages, is usually also on the Common Council packet when you're also voting on the same agenda items, because obviously the Planning Commission is a referring body. They recommendations, they make recommendations, but the Common Council is the voting body to approve or and so there is no, the sound study that was done for the car wash is not on the Common Council packet. So that gives me concern because, I mean, I appreciate that they did that. That's really great, and I think that it would help the city have a better understanding about noise. That's why I'm bringing that up. So that was my question regarding that. The other question is, I reviewed the Communities of Crocus information, the 50 pages, and I appreciate that they addressed the mitigation for the floodplain and natural resources, but I didn't see any information about the payment in lieu of taxes because obviously it's a nonprofit. So I did see that information in there. So I didn't know if I missed it or if it was at a different meeting. And then my final comment is about the Planning Commission replacing a the engineering person with another alderperson. That gets me concerned because I think that the Planning Commission should be a checks and balances for all the developments in the City of Franklin and having the same voting members that are voting on it, and the Common Council also voting on the Planning Commission is not ideal. And I did some quick research on the way here. Oak Creek has five citizens, Muskego, West Alice, Greenfield, Mequon, Shorewood, Bayside, Wet Fish Bay, all have five citizen community members, and then they have an alderman and a mayor. So I'm just saying it's pretty common to have five community members and they don't have, like, some of them have the attorney as a support staff. So I just want to bring that to your attention. And obviously, I know there's peoples that were, people that are interested in being on the Planning Commission, so I think that could be a spot that was filled. So those are my comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gind. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing no one, citizen common period. Will we on item? Sorry? Want to say something? We on item C, approval of minutes, regular common council meeting of October 15, 2024. Is there a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have a motion carries. We have no hearings under D. We have no organizational business under E. We have no letters under F. Going into G1. This is D3, a resolution opposing conditions and restrictions for the approval of a special use for a 16-unit supportive housing development, resident community center and community hub facility upon property located at 0 South 31st Street, tax key number 761-9992-002, by Amy Hansel, Communities of Crocus applicant, Northwestern Mutual Life Insurance property owner. Ms. X, are you starting?
I am. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I have a brief presentation on this item, and I'd like to invite the applicants to join me at the table so they can answer questions about their application, and they also have some information to share with you. But I will start things off. So this request is for approval of a special use for a 16-unit supportive housing development on 31st Street. It's the lot here currently zoned B4, which is a mixed-use business classification. It allows for multifamily development under the standards of our R8 zoning or multifamily residential development zoning ordinance, as well as other uses in their application. So attendant to this, there's also, it's a 16-unit housing development, a center for the residents of that housing development who have intellectual and developmental disabilities, and then a separate hub space. So there may be some questions about the attendant items with this. So tonight's discussion is only about the special use for that single lot. There is also a request for comprehensive master plan amendments and a rezoning for three lots that are also related to the future phases of this development. Those will be on the December 3 Common Council meeting to allow for the required public hearing time, notice time. So the comprehensive master plan amendment requires a public hearing before this body. The special use and rezoning already had public hearings at Common, or at Plan Commission. Just to orient folks a little bit, these are four lots owned by, currently owned by Northwestern Mutual Life. They are located along 31st Street. Immediately to the east is the Master Halco Ladder Company, the Statesman Development, and single-family residential neighborhoods on the other sides. The lots have quite a lot of natural resource features. I'll canvas those a little bit more in detail, but I want to start by saying that the properties do have adequate developable area to allow for the proposed density. Again, we're talking about Lot A tonight. It's got a couple of features here of note. A constructed wetland, which is a stormwater pond. There are two of those, a regular stormwater pond, and then this area is a mixture of woodland, wetland, floodplain, et cetera. And so one of the things that was discussed at length at previous meetings regarding this item was the presence of natural resources and the impact that they have on the site, concerns about developable area. We had comments about that from the public and also from the Plan Commission, and the applicants have done a little bit more research to show that they are affirmatively able to do the development as proposed. They will have to submit a site plan for future review and approval in order to actually build what they're proposing. But there is, generally speaking, enough land to do that. So there were two meetings about these items. The August 22 Plan Commission meeting had that public hearing for the rezoning and special use, and there were a number of resident and commissioner comments. The item was tabled until October 22. There are two staff reports here for the Common Council to review, and if you have questions about that, I'm happy to answer them, but I don't want to delve too far in, in the interest of time. Suffice it to say that there were additional public comments at the October 22 meeting, both in favor and some with questions. And then also at that meeting, we received a letter from the County Executive David Crowley in support of this item as the county has committed funding to this. So that is one reason why this is separated from those other items and before you this evening is because there is a development timeline for the special use itself. But broadly speaking, the application is for a request for the mixture of uses and for the proposed density, which is well within what's allowed by the ordinance. So I can kind of touch on some of the other features of the site if desired, or the applicants can talk a little bit about how they propose to use this facility as the council pleases. So why don't we call up your presentation? Do you want me to read it into the record?
If you could, please.
Sure. Dear Plan Commission members, on behalf of Milwaukee County Executive's Office and County Supervisor Steve Taylor, we would like to reiterate our enthusiastic support for the Communities of Crocus Development located at 7521 South 31st Street in Franklin. Milwaukee County has invested $2.5 million of American Rescue Plan Act funds towards this development. Milwaukee County views housing as a main social determinant of health, and this project is especially relevant to the mission of the Department of Health and Human Services due to the development of, the development serving individuals with disabilities. It is the continued hope of Milwaukee County that this project can move forward. Thank you for your partnership with Milwaukee County. Sincerely, David Crowley, Milwaukee County Executive, and Steve F. Taylor, Milwaukee County Supervisor, District 17.
Thank you. And what I like to do is before we get in, if we, you know, this, we've seen a number of these presentations and things like that. If you wish to roll through this pretty quick, and then we can go through questions from up here. I know a lot of things have been asked, but we can, if you wish to just state your name and business address for the record, please. Get right up in there.
My name is Kevin Alabac. I'm with HGA Architects. We're at 333 East Erie Street in Milwaukee. Just real quickly, here with Amy Hansel and Emily Peters as well. They're the co-founders of Communities of Crocus. I think everyone understands their mission. You can go to the next one. It's really about providing a multitude of choices for adults with autism and similar disabilities, just to give them a range of support and a range of living in a community and having those choices for housing. The next slide shows the overall development. Again, it is the parcel to the north plan top that we'll talk about today for the special use. In the red are four what we're calling care homes. Each of those have
Welcome to use this if you wish. You bought it. Right?
Men luck. So the, the four red are care homes. Each of them have four one-bedroom apartments. There is a community center. That's a place where the residents of those care homes would be going during the day, and I'll, I'll show a quick plan of some of the activities in that room or in that building. And then the last building on this upper parcel is a supportive hub, and again, I'll talk about that a little bit more. Just so you're aware, moving down, the next parcel to the south has a 36-unit apartment building. It's two stories above parking. There is a community pavilion planned in a lawn area. And then again, because this facility is really trying to create a community, these purple are duplex houses, and then yellow are townhomes, and those are really intended for the caregivers, the families, the parents of the adults with autism, so they can live together in community. Real quickly, next slide is just a little bit on the phasing plan. So again, it is the top parcel that we're talking about today, and I'm going to go right away. You can skip ahead to this is the floor plan of the care home. So those four red to the, to the north of the plan, you can see in the light blue are the four apartments. They are each with bedroom, living room, full kitchen, and full ADA accessible bathroom. And then the lighter yellow here is sort of the shared space, so a shared living room and kitchen, shared laundry facilities, and then some different supportive rooms and staff room and entry here. So four of those. Again, these are one-story. The next shows an image. Again, these are meant to feel like homes, so they're a blend of masonry and siding. Again, these are conceptual renderings and drawings at this point. But again, one-story wants to feel like a home. The next image is of the elevations. You can get a sense of the sloped roof and the, again, the kind of low slung mid-century modern feel to the homes. Two images real quick on, this is inside of one of the units. Again, very important to connect to the outside, so lots of glass, lots of window and view. And then the next slide shows we'll jump to the, this is the center now. So this, during the day, the center building is adjacent to the care homes, and it's providing five areas for leisure, for art and music, for therapy, and for life skills training, as well as some office space. So again, during the day, the residents would be spending their time moving through those different zones. And then the last building is the supportive hub. Again, this is meant to be a resource for this community, for the residents that are living there, but the entire community. It's providing resources, library, training, information about autism, and how to be a supportive community for folks with autism. Again, this would be where the Communities of Crocus offices are, as well as some of their partner firms, and again, additional meeting room space and additional life skills training area, again, for use by those in the community. So that was a quick tour. Again, all these buildings are envisioned as one-story, other than the apartment building, which is two.
Thank you. Questions from the council? There is a motion presented.
I made the motion.
We have a first and a second on that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll entrust that you will keep my pointer. Annual report. Thank you. Annual report of the City of Franklin's Tourism Commission activity and 2025 budget. Good evening, gentlemen. Come on up. Officer, thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening. You have the floor.
I'm gonna get this on. I probably don't need it, but oh, okay, very good. Thanks for giving us a few minutes to do our annual duty to give you a report for the tourism commissions expenditures for the year, as well as the budget for the upcoming year. And I'd like to introduce Chairman Lance Schaper, and also we have commissioners with us tonight. Barb Wessner and Mark Wiley. And also with us tonight, we have the new executive director for Engage Franklin, Brandon Chaney. And he'll be back later on, maybe next year, to give you an update on what's going on with Engage Franklin. We didn't, didn't think it would be right just to toss him right in here with a couple of weeks under his belt. So anyways, just to start with our budget process that we've gone through, just a couple of items on the actual description for the Tourism Commission from statute and ordinance. The commission's responsible for coordinating tourism promotion and tourism development within the city. It's made up of five members, including at least one representative of the Wisconsin hotel and motel industry. That's Chairman Schaper.
Chairman Schaper. Kelly.
And the commission is staffed by the Economic Development Director. One highlight, of course, is the Tourism Commission has contracted with Engage Franklin to promote city and tourism businesses located in the city and to provide transient tourism information services. So that's the, the background and the current activities or the current mission that we're fulfilling. And if you look down a little farther, you'll see steadily increasing hotel room tax income. And we are looking at a forecast of $510,600. And that was a great slate provided to us by Finance Director Brown. And so, but that takes us to a point where we are looking at starting the 70-30 split of the room taxes as they come in. And Danielle's been gracious to coordinate that for us coming on into the future. And so the Tourism Commission gets 70% of those dollars, and then 75% of that goes to Engage Franklin. So just to give you a little background on some of the, the budget items, and then if you'll turn to the, the draft budget for 2025. Okay. And then what I'll do is I'll just go through each item, what we did and what we're looking at this year and what we're looking at for next year. For the motel room tax, we projected $344,000. And we've collected 145,000 of that, and that's because those revenues are, come in in arrears, sometimes four or five months later. And so we're always kind of behind on the receipts on those, but that's just how the, the reporting and the submission of the revenues goes. And then next year, we're projecting $357,000 for revenues there. And then we have $11,000 in interest for the retained funds that the commission has. And that takes us down to total resources of 355,000 for this year forecast and 368,000 for next year. Under the expenditure items that we have, we're probably not going to hit the 4,500 projected expenditures, and mostly that's been used for doing the assignment for the naming rights agreement to Engage Franklin, as well as an amendment and updating all that and getting it established. But as, as the Tourism Commission, you know, funds Engage Franklin and has some dollars that it can allocate, we're looking at shifting more of that to a grant program. And so I've only reduced the budget by $2,000 just in case we are going to need some legal review of some of the projects that we work on. And so that takes us down to Engage Franklin, sundry contractors. And so this year is forecast for their budget, expending for them, $258,000, and then next year would be $268,000. And that's based on 75% of the total of the actual motel room tax category that I told you about earlier. So the next item that we have activity for expenditures on is tourism events, and we've had a few of those that have come in this year. We had budgeted enough for one, which that $1,000 was for the Franklin Park Concert Series. But looking at the opportunity to help some of these smaller tourism events, we decided to increase that budget to 5,000 for next year. And then conferences and schools. We only had some activity to go to the annual event for the Chamber of Commerce, but we are looking at trying to get the commissioners to go to events like the State's Conference on Tourism, Wisconsin Tourism event, as well as maybe the Hotel Association's event. So we'll, we'll budget $2,000 for that next year. We only had 1,000 this year. And then under mileage, of course, you gotta get them there, so we'll budget 1,000 for next year, when we only had 250 for this year. So under marketing services, we're gonna do, we're gonna spend a little more than we forecast, about $5,500. But we were doing some printing for the park service, and there was software updates and maintenance expenses for Celebrate Franklin, the website that Engage Franklin is taking over. And then we helped with a library event and the Where's Nature Center event that they're putting on that we thought we'd help them with this year. So that takes us down to advertising, and that's basically just a notice. It's an announcement or a notice that we have one or two of those a year. And so we'll put 1,000 into that next year. And then the grant program that I mentioned, just like I say, it's a new, new effort by the Tourism Commission, and it'll help with events and investments, could be capital investments, could be promotional programs. And so we've developed, and it's been included in your packet, an application and guidelines for interested parties that have projects or programs to make an application. And so that takes us down to streetscape, and we have $50,000 in that for banners. And then once we're completed with that, we're looking at $15,000 for next year and probably ongoing for maintenance and replacement. So that takes us down to total expenditures forecast this year of $320,000, and then next year, $350,000. And so with that, I, I take any questions. Well, we'll wait till the end of the, the presentation here for questions on the budget. So I'll turn it over to Chairman Schaper.
Thank you, John. Good evening. Well, first I wanted to just say
Sir Schaper, you say just, just name and address for the record, please.
Oh, sure. Lance Schaper, business address here in town is 6901 South 76th Street.
Perfect.
Franklin. Well, first of all, I just want to recognize the efforts from John this year for, and in the past years of his guidance and support to the Tourism Commission, you know, has kept us, has been an invaluable resource for us, keeping us in line with city ordinances related to the Tourism Commission and just being tremendous amount of support for us as we, you know, try to fulfill the responsibilities of the commission. So thank you, John. Appreciate all your efforts. Just an overview on Tourism Commission activities in 2024. It, it was a year of transition. We started the year by working with Engage Franklin, the destination marketing organization that was created to help promote the City of Franklin as a tourism destination. And we were working with them to get the naming rights agreement for the ballpark from the commission's areas of responsibility to Engage Franklin. And just buttoning up that and everything that was associated with moving that naming rights agreement to Engage Franklin. We also then worked with them to establish a funding mechanism for Engage Franklin, and so that's where we worked on a percentage split of the revenues that come into the Tourism Commission, the room tax, taking a percentage of that and then distributing that on a quarterly basis to Engage Franklin. And, you know, I'm happy to report that with the addition of a new lodging facility, you know, this year, the combination mainstay and sleep-in, that overall room tax revenues are up, and that's gotten us to a point now where the 70%, 70-30 split between the commission and the City of Franklin has now reached a point where the, the revenues that come in exceed the grandfathered amount that the City of Franklin's been collecting every year, and so truly that 30% will be more than what the city's been receiving in the past. We'll hit that this year. And so we've been working with the Finance Director going forward to get to a situation where as revenues come in quarterly, then a month later or so after they're posted, we'll do that that 70-30 split for funding the commission, and the commission will in turn turn around and fund Engage Franklin. So we've reached that milestone this year. We also rehabilitated and updated guidelines for a grant program, which we've had from the very beginning. And that was for organizations, activities, new events, looking to get started or maybe to looking to get started or maybe to expand their outreach or scope, to come to the commission, fill out a grant form and apply for funds for, you know, their particular event. We updated the, and so in your packet, you have the grant form that we've used. And then we have a one-page cover that goes with that so that anyone that's interested can see John or pick up that form here at City Hall, get it completed and then meet with us at our monthly commission meetings here at City Hall and state their case. And then we, using our guidelines, make determinations on grant amounts. So that has been, again, this year, we just updated that, got a little more formal in how those are evaluated and made the guidelines a little clearer, hopefully to encourage, you know, more applications and more folks taking advantage of that program. And then we funded that, you know, we put a few more dollars into that grant program. And, you know, again, in some of the activities, I think you might have a copy of, you know, some of the awards this year were to smaller events that are held here within the city. Funding of the Parks Department pamphlets, which really turned out well. The person that, the entity that did the design and that did a fantastic job. So really proud of the work that was done there. And I think we'll be incorporating some of that graphic design in the visitor guide and some things that Engage Franklin is putting out. And then we've also been looking at some capital projects that would further overnight visitation to the City of Franklin. That really is, from my standpoint, the area, from my involvement, the year that was with the Tourism Commission. I mean, Brandon, taking the executive director role, will be able, hopefully in a month or two, stop by and talk to you about the real nuts and bolts of what happens on a weekly basis of promoting Franklin as a place to stay. And of course, as somebody with a vested interest in people staying overnight in Franklin, really happy to see them getting started with the launch, you know, the rehab of the website and now a visitors guide that's coming out shortly.
Thank you.
So, yeah, question?
Now, I'll open it up to the masses up here. Any comments, questions at this point? So there's a motion to place on file. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Pecorelli. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We definitely are looking forward to getting to the nuts and bolts of what that daily weekly plans are because, but thank you. Excellent job.
Thank you very much.
Item G3. Madam Health Director, I will talk slow as you approach. A resolution authorizing certain officials to execute an environmental service recycling agreement with Violia Technical Services LLC. Madam Health Director, good evening. I believe it's still working. He's got to bring it close.
Test?
Yes.
All right.
Very meek. Go ahead.
All right. I laid it out in the council action sheet, but looking to dispose of old medical equipment. And to do that, we need to contract with a recycling service, and this is that contract.
Let me make a motion to adopt.
Okay. First and second, Mr. City Attorney, you've got the floor.
Just on the technical end, there's still those errands in the insurance chart. Can you get those deleted?
Yeah, that was a preferred change and we're working with them. So hopefully they will delete those.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a first and a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G4. Clear Channel Thor Media Volition Franklin Contract.
Still move.
Second.
First and a second by Alderman Hassan. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. G5. A resolution authorizing certain officials to execute a 2024 Health Department project agreement with Emmens Business Interiors. Madam Director, do you have anything on this?
Still move.
I think Jesse had something too.
Okay, we've got a first.
A second.
We have a first and a second. Mr. City Attorney.
Just that the legal name of the contractor should be included in there. Instead of just Emmens Business Interiors, that's their doing business as name. So it should be Complete Office of Wisconsin Incorporated, DBA Emmens Business Interiors.
In the motion? Or did you mean in the standard agreement? Okay.
So you can say subject to technical changes as part of the motion.
Okay, so the motion would be that and the subject to technical changes. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is that your second?
Yes.
Excellent. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G6, Wisconsin Statewide Health Information Network Agreement for 2024 and 2025.
Still move.
Second.
First seconded by Alderwoman Day. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Wow. Well done. That would be important to this. But that's okay. A resul-
Thank you.
Thank you. G7, a resolution imposing conditions and restrictions for the approval of a special use for a physical fitness facility upon property located at 7199 South 76th Street.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Any further discussion on this? This is a wonderful thing. First and a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G8. Resolution to amend Resolution Number 2022-7873, imposing conditions and restrictions for approval of a special use for a condominium complex development used upon property located at 9524 South Sophia Court. Stephen R. Mills, Loomis and Ryan, Inc., applicant, Home Path Financial Limited Partnership, property owner, Mr. Martinez. Good evening and welcome. You've got the floor, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Regula Martinez, Planning Manager. The applicant is also here, so I will invite the applicant who also provide additional information on this item.
Kelly, could you please give?
Good evening, sir. Good evening. Welcome. And if you would just please state your name and business address for the record, please. And if you need a pointer, I have one.
Dan Schapp.
Uh-oh. That was what was dropped.
One, Regula.
You have choices. You got three. Oh. Please wisely.
Dan Schapp, Bear Development, 4011 Idiast Street, Kenosha, Wisconsin.
So.
Regula, you want this? You good?
I'm good. Yeah, I can.
All right.
This is a view of the subject property. It's basically located on Ryan Road. Here's the intersection of Loomis and Ryan, and here's the City of Muskego. This is a special use that was approved for condominium development. So the request tonight is that the special use permit has a condition that the applicant was required to install a sidewalk or trail from basically here, from the sidewalk that is serving the condominium development all the way east to the eastern property boundary. So the applicant requested to remove that condition. So the application was presented before the plan commission. And then it was tabled to so that the applicant can work with the staff to a design that was okay for staff and the applicant also to the plan commission. So the applicant submitted this design here that the applicant has worked with former engineering staff. It's basically a five-foot sidewalk, basically half of the segment approximately 100 feet. And for the rest is a 10-foot sidewalk. So the Ryan Creek Trail master plan for this area recommends a 10-foot wide sidewalk. But the applicant is not able to have that design because there is an existing store wall upon here that will kind of make difficult to build the 10-foot sidewalk all the way. That's why the applicant is kind of proposing this five-foot for health and the other half, which is 100 feet, about 10-foot wide. So the staff have a meeting with the applicant, staff being myself, city engineer, Mike Paulus, Dan Schapp, and kind of work on this design that the applicant presented that was not included in the original application. That's why staff in the original application recommended denial. But with this new design, staff is recommending approval because of the limitations of the store wall upon that was make, that will make difficult to build a 10-foot sidewalk. And if you want to provide further information, Dan?
No, I think that covers it. On October 3rd, the Plan Commission made a recommendation to remove the condition if the applicant submits a plan that demonstrates that this can be built. We did that. We had a conversation or we had a meeting with Mike Paulus, as Regula said, on October 17th. Village engineer Mike Paulus was comfortable, as was Regula, with the design. It went to Plan Commission on October 17th, and there was no recommendation because of not a full Plan Commission. So at this point in time, we've complied with the original Plan Commission motion. And we're seeking approval.
Okay, Mr. Martinez, you have something to add? Because I was going to ask you a couple of questions about this. So I've been, you know, we've been through this time and time. So now you're satisfied with where we're at with this?
Yes, correct.
Okay, I'll leave, I'm going to leave that alone. Open up to the common council at this point. Who's got questions? Okay, there's, this is a D6 issue. So is there a motion? There's a motion here listed.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Single further discussion. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. G9, in ordinance to amend Ordinance 2023-2569, in ordinance adopting the 2024 annual budget for the Capital Improvement Fund to transfer $150,000 of contingency appropriations to the Highway Capital Equipment Appropriations for the increasing project costs associated with the DPW Building Expansion Project. Madam Director of Finance. Do we want Kevin?
Yes, we'll invite DPW Superintendent up here. But I will just state that I put it pretty detailed in your council action sheet as to the history of this project. The only change that I would state is that first sentence, common council moved to contract, it should have been with CUNY Architects, not Grave USA. But ultimately, if you have any questions, Kevin is here to answer them. I assume that there would be due to the large funding request.
Mr. Superintendent, good evening and welcome.
Evening.
And I know this is a little bit of a, you know, the background is listed here. But where, and this can be a combination of the two of you, since you're both wearing green. If you could go into a little bit of detail about how we got here, I understand the background, but where are we at like right now? Because we've got, we're in a conundrum. I mean, we're in a bad conundrum. And there's a, there's a history piece component that, you know, it's unfortunate, but if you want to take the floor on that.
Actually, I'll let you take the floor.
Or Kevin. Superintendent?
Everybody knows we're putting an addition on at the DPW Garage. Unfortunately.
Bring it forward a little bit, sir.
Unfortunately, there was only $7,000 put in for contingency. Normally, there should be at least a 10%. And this is pretty much a $3 million project, so there should have been a minimum of $300,000 put in just for contingency for things that come up during construction. There's been numerous things that have already come up. And we're basically, just to get by for the construction, we need this to get started. And hopefully we can make it through. There is going to be some other issues. One of them is degrading retention pond work that there's, it was put on us to do, but it's beyond our scope of capability to do with that large of a project. So we're trying to figure out a way to make that work. Unfortunately, we haven't come up with a plan yet, but we're working on it. And that could cost quite a bit more. Yeah, the first estimate for that came in at 800,000. We've kind of, they've kind of sharpened pencils. They got it down to 720. But being that, that large of a scope, it'll have to go out for bid probably. And, but we're hoping to get it redesigned even smaller. That's our hope right now.
So I'm assuming there's going to be a few questions. I'll go last. You want to start?
Uh, I.
Okay. Alderwoman Ikman?
Thank you. With the amount of money that we're putting into this expansion, is this going to halt future talk and plans of building a new DPW building in the future?
Let me just, it's being built. It's being built for current needs. It's not built for any future needs. It's probably going to be too small before we even move in. I'm just being.
No, and that.
Before, it's, it's not, there is no future expansion in the new addition.
Okay, thank you.
Looking at this and how it came about and where we're at now, and that's, that's the thing is we're looking at, you know, what are the costs? What are the risks? Madam Director of Finance, if we were to simply halt the project right now, what would happen?
What, one, I don't think we could just halt the project.
I'm saying it on purpose, lady, because I want to get the conversation.
But two, we borrowed $3 million just to do this project. And if anybody remembers what the bids looked like back then, and I believe there were seven or eight alternates to the bid. And we chose the cheapest option, but didn't really see what the benefit was going to be. And so unfortunately, we're on the hook for $3 million with probably another $1 million to go just to make this project work.
Alderwoman Day.
Okay, so my question is a little bit more toward the Finance Director than DPW Superintendent. We, in the council action sheet, we're using, basically we're maxing out our contingency for this. And I know that you write here that you don't see any issues for the remainder of the year, but it is only November 6th. So what would, if something else were to come up, would we be pulling that from general fund or where would we, how would we?
We do still have some fund balance in the Capital Improvement Fund. If we needed to do any sort of transfer from the general fund, we could. But based on where current projects are at, most of them are in the design stage, not really construction stage. I believe this may be one of the only ones in the Capital Improvement Plan that is in current construction stages. So I don't see any anticipated, based on what we have going on right now, that we would need any additional money for the remainder of the year for the current projects that we have going on.
And then forecasting forward for the issues that Mr. Sleeder just brought up. I don't recall seeing anything in the budget for next year for this particular project. So kind of the elephant in the room of it's a large ticket item. Are, are we even able to do that? I know we can't, we're, I mean, I understand the predicament we're in with the borrowing, but this is a lot of money.
It's, so to be fair, I think that that'll have to be some further conversation before budget adoption between the four of us here to see what sort of funding is going to be needed because this has just been kind of talked about within the last couple of weeks. We have to come up with a future option and it will have to be put in the 25 budget.
Yeah, so that's going to be my follow-up. If there is any time that we could maybe revisit before the next council meeting, if things can be jiggered around so we can at least account for some of this, if not all of it, with any sort of defer, deferment on some other project somewhere. Just makes me very nervous to have that kind of money hanging around that we didn't account for.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alderwoman Ikman?
Thanks, man. I'm just going to throw this out there. I don't expect an answer on this, but it might not hurt in the future to explore if it were to be a possibility of building DPW 2 and having a second DPW building location on the opposite side of the city, whereas maybe certain things are stored there, for example, in. Whereas maybe certain things are stored there, for example, in winter. Grass cutting thing and items are stored so that the amount of money that we're investing into this project doesn't just go to waste. I mean, I'm thinking of that fire station over in the industrial park that seems like many have expressed they regretted building over time. You know, and we're gonna be losing the funding possibly on that too. Once we rebuild a new fire station, it's just we can't keep investing money into these buildings in the city. And then down the road, asking the taxpayers to invest in more to build, you know, more new ones. So if there's a way. That we can start kind of brainstorming and thinking now, looking into the future of how we could still utilize this building and the cost that we're investing into it. Um, and building maybe this another location that's smaller versus a whole new huge DPW for. Millions and millions of dollars, along with the desperately new fire station too. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I don't know of any other municipalities that have two DPW stations, but it's just a thought. So, but that'll yield.
Well, go ahead. I think I know what you're gonna say, but go ahead.
Well, no, I was just gonna say it, we're in the very early stages of this uh, situation we have. I truly do feel we're gonna be able to cut it back quite a bit, so I. I I say the eight hundred thousand because that's what we were told in the beginning here. I, we're getting it redesigned. Hopefully, it'll get scaled back quite a bit. But hopefully, we can really cut that back. But I'm just being out there with what we know.
And just to to your point, Alderwoman Ickman, um, I I wouldn't say that this would be a um, loss of money like. Um, Kevin said, this has been needed and needed for a very long time. We have equipment that has just needed this expansion, so. Um, to have a new DPW building somewhere else could be beneficial, but I I don't see that it would impact. Um, any future money or or anything like that.
Thank you.
So one of the things that I know we have talked about and split this out there a little bit, I'll be a little bit redundant is. Is looking at this project from the scope, the macro vision of well. How is this going to affect the day-to-day operations from the city? And how is it needed? And to quote, you know, to to recapture what the finance director said, yeah, it's needed, it's needed now. We are in desperate need of it. If we could have went back three or four years when it started getting going, this whole. This whole project thought, I think the scope would have been different to address to your point. I think this would have been uh. You know, we we can't look back and and wonder why this this happened a couple of years ago and where how we're here now. But I believe it is a prudent expenditure. I believe it's a justified expenditure. And I also believe that it's the best thing to serve the city. So I don't think there's there's like, you know, we we can't punt it anymore. We can't um, you know, cancel it, so. That's uh, my position, and I think we should move forward. Alderwoman Day?
I just can add one more point. I think this is what maybe the third or fourth time that the concept has been um, redesigned. But I guess I'm hopeful now that um, with your kind of larger input into the project, since you know, you're. You know, the person who oversees the day-to-day operation of that facility, that not only will it be. Designed in a way that's the most useful for you, but also the most, you know, responsible for the city piece. So um, so I'm happy that to hear that you're looking at um, redesigning it. Cause I know, I think this time it'll be a little bit better and more useful for what you need.
Yes, thank you. I I was just gonna say that uh, I I feel like, you know. It was out of my control and I'm just trying to do my part now and straighten things out.
Motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
We've got a first and a second. Mr. Piccarelli, further discussion?
Yeah, I just I just had one question around the contingency, uh, that there was only seven thousand or whatever. Um, so. Going forward, we have processes in place to make sure we have enough contingency on projects going forward. Cause I I understand what what happened, but um, to your point, usually you need at least ten percent. Um, I've, you know, I've seen projects twenty, twenty-five, depends on how much risk and things are there, you know?
So I think from my perspective, I could say maybe I should be more involved in that. Um, and Kevin can speak, but I think ultimately um, the city engineer and then the department working on that. Should be the ones that know that policy. And I do believe that our current city engineer and Kevin will continue to adhere to that going forward.
Thank you. Okay, we have a first and a second. Uh, this will be a roll call, please.
Alderman Ickman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ickman.
Aye.
Alderman Hassan.
Aye.
Alderwoman Day.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nos, one absent, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, G ten. Resolution imposing conditions and restrictions for the approval of a special use for tsunami express car wash, a car wash facility located at. Six four four nine South Whitnall Edge Road. Uh, it's in D six. Mr. Martinez, good evening and welcome. You've got the floor, sir.
Just want to clarify on one of the comments uh, from the public. Uh, the. This item was presented twice before the Plan Commission in August and October. So at the first meeting, the Plan Commission tabled this item and requested uh, the applicant to submit a traffic impact analysis. But it had no comments about the sound study. So in the October meeting, uh, was basically about the traffic impact analysis. Uh, and the Plan Commission recommended uh, approval of the special use. And what is in the packet is all the items that works in the October uh, Plan Commission meeting packet. That's why the the sound study is not in your uh, common council meeting packet. Uh, however, it's available in the uh, Plan Commission uh, webpage uh, for the August meeting.
Okay, uh, Mr. Martinez, could you say it a little louder, just so everybody caught capture that? Where is that?
Oh, sorry, yeah, the.
If I fit right now, tonight, I get home, I'm done looking at political stuff and I wanna say, hey, you know what? Where's that sound study for the car wash?
Right.
Where would I find that?
Plan Commission meeting packet, August twenty-second.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. So what is available? Okay, uh, council questions, comments. There is a, oh, Mr. Piccarelli.
I I just have one with so it it looks like in the amendment, there was uh, staff. Wanted to add in language around the sound barrier, but that it was gonna be looked at in the future, that might reading that correctly. And if there were complaints or if it we actually say complaints, if there was a violation of the maximum, is that, is that what's in his style?
Correct. Uh, yeah, that that is a condition recommended by staff, uh, because the sound study uh, recommend the installation of a sound barrier. Uh, but the applicant requested that that to be deferred to the future if. The city receive a complaint and go to the side and actually find a violation. Then it will trigger the installation of the sound barrier. Because the sound barrier is adjacent to a parking lot, the staff uh, accepted that uh, request of the applicant because it's not affecting like residents or businesses. It's just a parking lot.
So then, in the event, let's say that occurs and then. The applicant, we tell them, you're required to put the the wall, the sound barrier in, and they go, no, we're not doing that. They're already operating and all that kind of stuff. What what recourse do we have then at that point?
Well, in that case, I mean, these conditions, uh, the applicant will need to uh, abide to this condition or even future uh, owners. So if the applicant. It may will go to a violation, it will go to a citation and in municipal court.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, then Alderwoman Day.
And it's not just a citation at municipal court when there's a violation. Based on an approval, it can be brought back and all the way to the maximum, the approval can be taken away.
Right.
Uh, Alderwoman Day, I think your button is on. There we go.
Um, so for that, so this is um, number four in the um, conditions. Uh, page two twenty-three that we're looking at. Uh, so my question would be. Is there a way that we can add a line to that to uh, sort of. Do a check and balance with the applicant, say maybe in a in a year from adoption or a year from construction or operation. Whenever they start, a year from opening date that we can uh, have them come back and review to make sure that there aren't any complaints. For sound, I just, I don't know that.
Are you thinking to see if they're in compliance still?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just because it just to add a little a little bit to Alderman uh, Piccarelli's point, just to add a little bit more since it was kind of their request. And we're giving them the leeway on it. I think this then says, okay. And this gives a definitive date. Let's see what's going on in a year. And if we got no complaints in a year, great. Um, but then at least, you know, it it calls them back here in case there are um, things going on that we can address it at that point.
That's okay for me, however, the applicant's not here.
Well, I guess just as as from the council standpoint, we're not looking to put them on a double secret probation. What we're saying is.
Yeah.
You're going, you know, you're you're going to just come back and we're just gonna review what's going on. We're not, we're not looking to sanction. We're not looking to say, you know, we're just saying we'd like to have a review in a year.
Yeah, I'm not saying to put up the sound barrier. I'm not saying to change the dust bowl or anything like that. Just, you know, a year from whatever date they open. Um.
How about that? That acceptable? Oh, Mr. City Attorney. Button.
What if staff simply informs the common council members if there's a complaint? Then you will know. And if there's not, then there's no need to bring the applicant back. To the council regarding the conditionally approved permitted use.
Mm-hmm.
Or use permission.
Oh, boy.
Biding by. There are violations.
Excuse me, it's already conditional regarding the um, the car wash abiding by our codes. So if there is a violation, we would obviously have them come back and um, or have a citation and which would potentially trigger. That um, recommendation to be made and.
Yeah, I guess I was just looking for clarification of if it happens, then what happens? Because the way that it's written says they must install a sound barrier. Um, only in the event the city staff finds a violation of the maximum sound level. So to me, the way this reads is if there's a violation. Bam, sound barrier goes up, no questions asked, not nothing about a citation, nothing about anything like that. So that's how I'm reading it. So if we think that's too. Punitive and we want to have a discussion about that, that that's why I'm bringing it up. Because to me, when I read this, it's like if somebody calls in, there's a violation, then. Bam, you have to put up the sound barrier. So I, to me, it's just.
That that's what the applicant requested, that they won't install the sound barrier only if a violation is out.
And they understand that the way it's written is if it happens once, they have to put it in.
Right.
Okay?
It would be a sustained violation, not just.
Yeah.
Somebody angry that there's a car wash there.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Okay.
In all this craziness, did we have a first and a second? Okay, is there a motion to approve this?
Through second.
First and second, my Alderman Hassan, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Well explained, thank you. Um, no, you can't. Because we, well, I know you're gonna keep talking, but no, you can't. Because I know this is, this is one of the things that you have to follow up with staff. Um, how about your question can be addressed with Regulo tomorrow unless we got some assistance to spend the rules? Seeing none, please talk to Regulo in the morning or now if you wish, Dana, but not to the council as a whole. Okay.
Brandon.
G eleven. Request for the common council to approve the filing of an application for unified development ordinance text amendment. For an ordinance to amend one five dash one zero point zero one zero two. Membership of the unified development ordinance to change the plan commission membership to remove. The city engineer member in the place thereof, provide an alderperson, please, please. Alderperson serve on the plan commission. So I'll start. So this was, given the fact that. Uh.
Point of order.
It's not a point of order still, we're just waiting. There we go. So the plan commission, as you know, we and I, there's this, the breakdown is in here. That uh, we do not have a city engineer at this point. That would be a voting member of the plan commission. There's a number of reasons why I believe that this is a very good move to at this point. Remove the city engineer who is voting at the time, voting on other projects that they're directly involved in. I never liked the look of that as an alder for six years. I only get as a mayor for a year and a half. I think this is an opportunity and I personally, again, this is, this was my idea to bring this forward. If you wanna come at me, come at me. But I think now we are to a point where I believe the amount of projects and such, I like to see this kind of molded. Like at the finance committee level, where you've got this much going on, this is the importance. And would like to see another elected official on that that voting body because there's that much going on. I think we've we've seen the benefit of having the finance committee, having three electives on it that can get intimately involved. In the challenges that city that city has. Parallel to this, moving forward, I think this would be the right thing. And I guess my my, what my plan would would be. If this is adopted and approved, would be then to put it out to the other five alders. To say if you are interested in becoming a member of the of a member of the blank plan commission. That I would talk to you and it would be, you know, it would be me pushing and putting that that alder on this plan commission. Cause the plan commission is is not for the faint of heart. Uh, there's, there's a lot. I mean, there is a lot. I mean, these these agenda packets are thick with plans. Every member that current plan commission, they dive into it. They, there's a lot of detail. There's a lot of responsibility. And it's very, very important that this thing is, things are done right and researched as they move forward. So that in a nutshell, and I'll answer more as we keep going. So Alderman Barber, you've got the floor?
Um, I'm totally agree in agreement with this move. I think there's certain committees, the workload is there and to have more council input into that at the level of the committee. And we're working, uh, they can bring more information back to us uh, as a as a as the body that oversees it. To to make decisions with. My only thought that I would think of is that if the city engineer. Uh, if we have one or comes back, could possibly be a resource like the other administrative people would be on certain committees. So that would be my only, I only thought, I'd like to get feedback on on what the other elders think of that. But uh, I think it would be beneficial to have this city engineer as a resource person to that.
Well, it a resource, but not a voting member.
Right, exactly. A total, just a total resource, not a voting member.
You or me?
And so City Attorney, then.
That is stated in the plan commission. That the city engineer will be there on upon any matter involving the engineering department.
Okay.
So that's the action sheet.
Yeah, so the the idea is that just as plan commission, um, rather plan department. Planning department members are present when uh, it's applicable per planner. As well as the economic director, um, the engineering representative would be here.
Uh, Alderwoman Day.
Thank you. Uh, I also am in agreement with the change. Um, as stated here, I think there is benefit. For some of these committees to have more than one elected official on them. Uh, for a few reasons. Uh, the first is that there are some. Matters that come before plan commission that the plan commission is the decision body. It doesn't come then to council. So. Having more than one elected official in the vote on that, I think is is beneficial to have, you know, more than one opinion on that. Uh, secondly, uh, it's, I think it's hugely important that we get um, that chair filled because. For quorum purposes and plan commission, for those that don't know, uh, we need four yes votes for something to go through. So. Uh, there are frequently times where we run into something where uh, we only have four voting members there, in including, you know, the mayor having to then, you know, be a voting body. So. It's beneficial to have that chair filled because then chances of us having a more lively discussion and um. And things to actually be able to be voted on is also important. I will say though, I do um, I do also like the comments that are made tonight in in. In a public comment, um, if it's possible to, you know, add another uh, citizen to that group, I think also, um, cause right now there's. There's four. Um, if possible to have five, that would be great. I know it's hard to fill the vacancies that we have now, but um. Uh, I think there's plenty of people in this community that could add value to that particular committee. So something to also. Think of in the future, um, if we're ever considering expanding the uh, resident uh, portion of this, I think this should be one that we look at that as well.
Okay, uh, I think we're on this side.
No, just I agree with.
Alderwoman Ickman, then Alder. Alderman, then Alderman Pecorelli?
Is there a motion on the floor? Well, I'll make the motion then.
Here we go, a first and a second, further discussion, Alderman Pecorelli.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say I, I, I agree as well for all the reasons you stated before and the fact that have an engineering engineer there. Right, is important for any of those matters. I think it, I do agree to that in the future, maybe adding um, one more in there would, from a citizen standpoint, might be helpful, but not, I don't think we have that, not tonight, not tonight.
Okay, we've got a first and a second, can we roll call, please?
Alderman Barber.
Hi.
Alderman Day.
Hi.
Alderman Hassan.
Hi.
Alderman Ikeman.
Hi.
Alderman Pecorelli.
Hi.
Five eyes, no no's, one absent, motion carries, G twelve. In ordinance to amend ordinance two zero two three dash two five six nine ordinance adopting the two thousand twenty four annual budget for the capital lay fund to transfer six thousand two hundred and sixty two dollars of contingency appropriations to capital equipment appropriations for the purchase of a replacement survey controller. That was easy. First and second, roll call, please.
Alderman Pecorelli.
Hi.
Alderman Ikeman.
Hi.
Alderman Hassan.
Hi.
Alderman Day.
Hi.
Alderman Barber.
Hi.
Five eyes, no no's, one absent, motion carries. Uh, G thirteen. In ordinance to amend uh one zero dash one two personnel committee uh, B composition and C term to remove two of the alderperson membership positions. So I will start. Now, looking at the, this particular commission that had three alders on it and doing a little research, this, this came about with three alders because at one point in time before act ten, when you had a multitude of unions that had issues, concerns, grievances, whatever, uh, different hiring practices, different hiring standards, different hiring issues, firing discipline, whatever they were, that were non-police department and non-fire department that went to the police and fire commission. They would be presented here. And looking at this uh, from a way to perhaps streamline, number one, number two, take some onus off of the electeds and I know this is gonna be some form of discussion as well as, you know, taking two members off, making it a one membership position only. And where would we go from there? But I absolutely positively think it's the right time to reduce this. And it will still be effective. I don't believe it's gonna even be a hiccup. But we definitely need to reduce the members. In that way, hopefully, if somebody wishes to relieve themselves of that obligation, they would excitingly be was willing to go on to the plan commission. So Alderwoman.
I believe Alderman Barber may have had a question, his hand up before me. Did you mic? No. I, I didn't know. I didn't wanna be rude.
I know. You had your hand up and I call and you know you wanted to defer. So what do you wanna do?
And I haven't anyone upset. Um, as I am brand new to the personnel committee and I've been to what, I had just a handful of meetings. I would be one that would be willing um to step down from it if need be. And I do have interest in plan commission. And encourage others that may as well to express that interest too, but just wanted to throw that out there. I don't have the experience on the personnel committee such as Alderman Barber, if he still has interest in being on it. Does, he's been on it for a multitude of years. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Uh, Alderman Barber.
Having served on personnel since two thousand six, I uh have had some experience with it. And there are times I agree with reducing it. I, I don't think we need three alderpersons on there. It's not, doesn't warrant it. But there are times when we get into a lot of the technical things regarding the benefit packages and the different kind of things that are available to the employees. Uh, so that whole benefit package is is a, a not as confusing as say the plan commission stuff, but it does have the detail that has to be communicated and being understood. And I think the, for the same reasons we would have two people, I'd be very comfortable with two alderpersons on there as, as a maybe a, a way of changing this if we wanna do this at this point, but I'm just throwing it out there that I think this would be a committee that, that would require, there, there's, there's workloads, but there's a lot of technicalities with this one that I think two people would be um, on the council and have that base information when we come, when it comes before the body would be beneficial. Not gonna alter the motion, I'd just like to get some feedback on that. But I, I do say that two people, two other persons would be a good thing.
Okay, uh, further discussion on this before I keep going. Uh, Alderman Hassan?
Yeah, I, I really like the idea of Mike Barber for keeping two people in the personal committee. I think it's a good idea to have at least two others.
Yeah, um, all right, Alderman Pecorelli?
I, I would be supportive of that as well. It would be consistent with what we just done with plan, right? So they both have two for right now. And you can see from there if we, longer term, if we go away, we just, we, we could go down still the one, but it would at least free up one. Hopefully that would give opportunity to get over to planning and we didn't just let's say net add another committee for, for others.
Okay, uh, if there is a motion then and we can make the motion, was it B or C, whichever one it says, we'll bring it down to two. I'm gonna put my spectacles on now. Uh, let's see.
The motion to adopt would be um the term to change to other other person membership positions as citizen or can we?
Hold on, Alderwoman. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, given the fact that we now basically said that we'd like to see it go from uh, three members to two members, uh, would you, could you present a motion to that that would fit? Or amend either B or C?
The bottom line says two. A motion to direct the city attorney to redraft the ordinance in accordance with additionally a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend section ten dash twelve personnel committee B composition and C term to change one of the alderperson membership positions to a citizen membership position.
Yeah. No, we're, we're, we're simply, we're not looking to keep the same. One more to introduce for you. We're, we're not looking, we're just looking to reduce the number. So if it reduces it by one member, we're not looking to add anyone else.
That get into motion? Okay, and well then delete that last part about um two citizen membership positions.
To Alderman Prince.
Who? Change and remove one of the aldermen, alderperson membership positions.
Okay, so we're, cause just so we're clear, everybody's clear. You've got the body right now, the personnel committee, we're simply removing one whole position, one alderman. One position, we're not creating another system position, we're not creating, we're actually reducing the amount by one.
So you have eight.
Eight numbers to nine.
City Attorney? And that was my goal is to remove the two to keep it an odd number, so that's.
Is it required to have certain number?
Requirement, I did suggest that uh if we double check with labor council.
It is just like, go ahead and say that again, please.
At, currently at nine, it's the largest committee, I believe, that we have for members.
Uh, Alderman Ikeman.
Does that include the one that recently resigned from it?
Well, it's the membership positions.
Yeah, it's membership positions, yep.
Okay.
Then I make the motion to uh, as amended by the city attorney.
Your second? We've got a first and a second. We've got a first and a second. Uh, any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all is in favor? Any opposed? I just have it, motion carries, very good. G fourteen. Alderman D two, a resolution authorizing certain officials to execute a development agreement for public infrastructure improvements with Franklin Public Schools at eight four two nine West Forest Hill Avenue, tax key number eight three eight nine nine seven eight zero zero one.
Motion to adapt.
Second.
We've got a first and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Pecorelli?
So I just have a question on, at some point, does this come back through again? Uh, cause we're, this would be putting in for to, to essentially allow that, that facility to be built, correct? This is the beginning of that.
City Attorney?
I didn't catch that.
So, so we're doing this so that they can build that, the improvements with that new facility at that location, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and at some time are we going to be then looking at any type of tra- traffic implications or anything from that as well?
I don't know, I was not detail involved in this project.
Alderwoman Day?
Oh, I'll go in here. Um, so the project came back and forth, the plan commission several times um throughout the spring and summer. Um, traffic was brought up ad nauseam. Um, and it was the position of the school district that it was not a problem. Um leave that to the opinion of, of all the, of everybody involved, but uh, so it was visited. Um, they have their plan, I believe, um, at a future plan commission meeting and future council meeting, there are facets of this um project that are coming back, but the site plan itself has already been approved.
Okay, that's, that's for sure.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um first and second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? I just have it, motion carries, G fifteen, Alderman D two. A resolution for acceptance of a water main easement at Franklin Public Schools, Franklin, Wisconsin, tax key number eight three eight nine nine seven eight zero zero one.
Motion to adapt.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Mr. City Engineer. Good, you're paying attention, good.
Subject, subject to technical corrections, simply put, the agreement's not the city standard form. I heard on the phone that apparently it came from the Franklin Public School District. And um the uh recording cover sheet is prepared by the clerk's office and it doesn't include the terms of the contract starting already, that's the next page. So that's the technical correction and the return to is to the city clerk, that engineering staff.
So the first and the second with technical corrections, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? I just have a motion carry. Who made the second on that? Good. G sixteen, Alderman D two, a resolution for acceptance of a stormwater facilities maintenance agreement and a stormwater management access easement for eight four two nine West Forest Hill Avenue. Tax key number eight three eight nine nine seven eight zero zero one.
Motion to adapt.
Second.
First and a second, uh, we've got for discussion, Mr. City Attorney.
Same suggested, subject to technical corrections, same issue.
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Acceptable on the second?
Yes.
All is in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? I just have it, motion carries. G seventeen, finance committee recommended changes to the two thousand twenty five mayor's recommended budget. Madam Director of Finance, you've got the floor.
Okay, so back on October twenty second, the finance committee met and we discussed the tax levy, the preliminary tax rates, the general fund and the sewer fund. And after holding that discussion, the finance committee recommended some future changes to the mayor's recommended budget. Um, I put the spreadsheet in here, but I know that that can be kind of hard to read other than just seeing that we have a balanced budget. So I provided the memo that was given to the finance committee to kind of break it down by departments, what the changes were. Um, and I'm happy to go through them quickly for the members that are not on the finance committee. So we went over the general fund. Um, there was some identified changes to the revenue side and the expenditure side. Um, I'll start with the revenue side and the general tax levy that was presented was a very preliminary tax um levy that did not have the assessment of values calculated into it at the time. So based on the assessment calculations um that were given uh from the assessor, um, we had to reduce the levy in order to reduce the burden on the citizens. And then also we decided to, or finance committee recommended um reallocation of twenty five thousand dollars to the library fund. Um, the E plan review back on October fifteenth, uh, common council approved the inspection department to implement the E plan review. Um, that will bring in some revenue into twenty twenty five. However, there's really no amount that we were able to determine that we will be receiving um, due to the ability for the developer to determine if they wanna use um city of Franklin resources or the state resources. So I did a little bit of research on some other surrounding communities that use E plan and most of their budgets recommended ten thousand dollars in their budget. So I figured ten thousand dollars uh for twenty twenty five seemed um applicable. And then we can look at actual um revenue uh brought in in twenty twenty five to determine a twenty six budget. Um, we removed twenty seven thousand dollars, or sorry, seven thousand dollars from fire inspection fees. Um, that was just an error on my end. I did not realize that in twenty twenty three, the fire inspection fees were completely eliminated. And so um we reduced that down to zero. Um, on October first, uh, I got the final report for the video service provider aid from the Department of Revenue, which provided um a little over seventy six hundred dollars in additional revenue. So I wanted the twenty five budget to reflect that. Um, the interfund interest, the water loan is a loan that was um given to the water department about ten years ago. And so there's just some internal interest that is continuing to be uh transferred from the water department. I believe twenty twenty five is the last year for that. But I wanted to include that in the um general fund revenues. Um, I will come back to ambulance resources and I'll explain after I'm done. Um, but that is the increase in revenues that are being uh recommended to be approved and added to the twenty five budget. So if anybody has any questions on the revenue portion. No? Okay.
Seeing none?
So the expenditure side, um, I will just start by saying that um, the overall wage increase for the employees here at um city of Franklin was reviewed by finance committee and some changes were recommended. And so there's adjustments that are made to each department that you will see here. Um, this will allow for a two percent um increase overall for non-union reps um at the city of Franklin. And then the police department and the fire department will continue to get their um increase based on their contracts. Um, the first one is the overall merit pool. So for the last few years, the city has um contributed some funds to the overall merit pool. Um, however, there has never really been a policy implemented to uh determine the use of those funds. And so this year it was um recommended to bring that merit pool funding for twenty twenty five down to zero since we still have um a large portion of a fund balance in that fund and we can continue to carry that forward until a um actual policy is put into place for the merit pool. And so city staff intends to bring that back um, so that we can get a policy put in place and then we can continue to fund that going forward. Um, legal services, that was reduced by twenty thousand dollars and that was just because the initial mayor's recommended budget had um the exact same budget that was in the twenty four, um, the exact same appropriations for the uh twenty five budget was the same from the twenty four budget and city attorney gave me his recommended twenty five budget, which allowed for a twenty thousand dollar uh decrease. Um, the overall insurance, um, in October, um, the director of administration and myself was given uh more projected insurance costs for building, crime, um, all of those wonderful insurances that we pay workers comp. Um, and in that, our workers comp insurance dramatically increased. However, we were completely reappraised in twenty twenty four and so our building insurance did go up about forty five percent. However, it pretty much offset each other. So that's why you see the five hundred and ten dollar difference, but I did want that included in the twenty five budget. Um, and due to the wage structure that I just discussed, um, it allowed for most of the departments to receive some additional funding for their non uh personnel expenses. So I just wanted to briefly touch on each of the departments and what they are going to be um receiving based on your approval. Um, so the police department uh receiving an additional sixteen thousand dollars and that is for uniforms, data cabling, firearms supplies, auxiliary. supplies, auxiliary support, crime prevention materials and office supplies. Uh, the fire department uh recommended thirty five thousand dollars additional for equipment maintenance, conference in schools, medical supplies, um auto maintenance, vehicle support, general utilities, and then their turnout gear. Um, ID department, you'll see is a sixty one thousand dollar decrease and that is due to the allocation of resources that are being provided by the IT department to some of the other departments. Um, and so that was in a decrease of the overall allocation uh for payroll costs. Um, the municipal court, common council approved the language line, so we implemented that in the twenty five budget. Um, and then a little bit of additional funding for court software and uh memberships. Um, administration postage uh went up in July and is anticipated to go up again in twenty twenty five. So we gave a little bit of additional funding for postage and office supplies. Um, the clerks receiving a little over a thousand dollars for filing fees, office supplies and printing. Um, the allocated insurance costs and inner department charges. And what that is, is basically each department again is is being um charged for their portion of the insurance. And then also um the inner department charges are for uh allocated payroll costs. Um, the health department is reduced based on uh the wage adjustments, but they did get a little increase that was uh requested for medical supplies and mileage. Um, the planning department in uh indicated ten thousand dollars for planning consult services. However, that is no longer needed since they're fully staffed, so we will reduce that by the ten thousand dollars. Um, municipal buildings receiving a ten thousand dollar increase. That's for shredding, um additional tools and some landscaping. The highway department receiving roughly eighteen thousand. That's for general utilities, traffic signal maintenance, memberships and equipment rental. Um, parks department sixty two hundred dollars for parks maintenance and utilities. The economic development department, that's um for an additional uh funding for the volunteer recognition fund, and that's for basically the business um luncheon that we have. And then also some um public relation services that are going to be useful for the economic development department. Uh, the engineering department, the major decrease is due to allocating additional engineering resources over to our TID districts. Um, and that was just to clean up some of the uh additional. We have further development going on in the TIDS and so we allocate. I don't know where you're going, but you're turning left somewhere. Uh, but basically the engineering department, city clerk, director of administration, finance department, um engineering and economic development uh department, we have um allocated payroll costs that get allocated over to our TID districts. And so I reevaluated what was going on in the TIDS and anticipated how much development was going on and how much of the city's resources it would need. Um, and so some of the funding from the general fund to support uh those projects are moved to the TIDS now. Um, elections was a fifty two dollar decrease just to the wage adjustment. Um, the finance department, same thing, um decreased due to allocating payroll um costs over to the TID districts. The recreational department, that was an increase of two thousand dollars. And as um John Baganski spoke earlier, um, senior activities uh really could use that funding to support uh the senior luncheon. And so with that, um I'll go back to ambulance services. So to allow our departments to receive the additional funding that they needed to mostly support their day-to-day activities, um provide wage increases to the city staff. Um, it was important to balance the budget due to the decrease in the levy and then really review the incoming resources and see if there was anywhere that we could do some adjustments. And so I took a look at the ambulance services and I um determined that the projected revenue for twenty twenty four is about um one million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. And the projected at the time of the mayor's recommended budget, which was only based through um June, was only uh one point six million. So that left some wiggle room for us to increase the revenue on the ambulance services to to provide those additional services to our departments. So in order to balance the budget, um it would, there was eighty two thousand dollars that we could increase in ambulance services. Um, that may change. Again, I predict that we could go up to at least one point seven five million just to uh break even with twenty twenty four. However, the ambulance department and fire departments are looking at some adjustments to their fee schedule for twenty twenty five, so it may even be more than that. Um, but that again, still gives us a little bit of wiggle room to um see what we may need over the next two weeks. So that is the general fund. If you guys have any questions on that.
Any questions on that point?
Just to say thank you.
Agreed.
And then I'll just briefly state the sewer fund. Um, back when the mayor's recommended budget was put together, it was a basic mirror of the twenty four budget into twenty five due to staffing changes and the deadline and just not being able to meet with the sewer and water department to get a proper budget brought in front of you. So I was able to do that with the um interim sewer department uh superintendent Glenn Beardsley. We met and went over the water department budget and the sewer department budget. And we are bringing forward these recommended changes uh based on the actual information now. Um. So the increase in the revenues is um an MMSD increase uh from a grant that we received from them. And then just some user fee uh increases based on MMSD's seven percent projected um user fee and usage um increase for uh their budget. That typically gets put onto the city and then the city then puts that onto the users. And then the expenditures, um, you'll see on the spreadsheet. I won't go through every single one, but it basically just completely aligns the budget with what the sewer department needs. And then what uh the overall revenues are projected to be. So if you have any questions on the sewer fund.
Saying none.
Okay, then I just ask for um approval of the finance committee recommended changes for the budget and just anticipate you will probably have some more, even just based on tonight's conversation about the um camp, the expansion, yes, DBW expansion and probably some further recommended approvals at the November nineteenth meeting, but this is what we have for now.
Motion to approve.
Second. We've got a first and a second further discussion. Uh, how about a roll call on this, please?
Alderman Pecorelli.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ikman.
Aye.
Alderman Hassan.
Aye.
Alderwoman Day.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Five ayes, no noes, one absent, motion carries. Very good job. Thank you. G eighteen. A resolution authorizing certain officials to execute an addendum to facilitate American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding for the multimedia communications and engineering Inc. Agreement for fiber optic ring design and construction project management services. The fiber optic management LLC agreement for fiber optic maintenance services. The Tele, Tele Pacific Corp. Communications Network and Firewall Services Agreement. The Ring Central Inc. Unified Communication Services Agreement, the Landmark Structures. One LP Elevated Water Storage Tank Contract B. The Dorner Inc. Water Transmission Main Contract A. The Vinson Construction Company Water Transmission Main Contract C. And the Johnson Controls Inc. Energy Savings Performance Contract, each entered into each entered into with the city, uh, madam director of administration.
Uh, essentially what's before you is uh projects that were already approved to use ARPA funding. And um what we had determined is that we were not up to snuff with the language that was required to use those ARPA funds. So this right here is to make sure that we are meeting that requirement.
Well stated.
Yeah, and I, sorry, and I'll just to piggyback off of that, um, it was actually brought up during one of the um water tower project uh meetings that um was using ARPA funds. And after looking at the uh procurement policy for the use of federal funding, um, it was determined that this additional addendum is to be input in each contract that um we have to use the ARPA funds. And so in order for us to be compliant and us to continue to use that ARPA funding, it was important to add these into each contract um and have it done before the July, um, December thirty first, twenty twenty four deadline because those contracts have to be obligated by that time in order to use this funding. And then um the city attorney so graciously reached out to every single contract um owner that we have and was able to get for the most part, we believe, um agreements in place that um even though the contract has been either fulfilled, obligated, um complete of whether the work has been complete or is currently being complete, um that they will add this into the contract, add that language in there so that our city is compliant and able to again receive that grant funding.
Wonderful. I'll make the motion.
Second. First and a second, roll call, please.
Alderman, uh, Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Day.
Aye.
Alderman Hassan.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ikman.
Aye.
Alderman Pecorelli.
Aye.
Five ayes, no noes, one absent. Motion carries. G nineteen. Approval of pay applications two and reimbursement request number two for the two thousand twenty four PPII some pump project. MMSD funding agreement. M one zero 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 five FR zero one. Madam Director of Administration.
I was just told that I didn't have to bring this forward. So, um, so basically this is just a a change for um or a request for payment for work that has been done. And uh, once it is approved, we can issue payment and also issue reimbursement request from MMSD regarding the PPII project, which is um now complete. The, the second portion is now complete and successful. And uh, this just basically closes it out, I believe.
We'll get a clo, a quick motion anyway. Their motion.
I'll make it.
Second.
First and second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Well done. Uh. We are going to uh take, why don't we take a uh five minute break here? Kelly, we're gonna take a five minute break.
Sounds great.
And. Okay, going on to, we are back on record. It is eight seventeen PM. Uh, we're moving on to item G twenty. And I will look for a motion on this, a motion to enter into closed session agreement for professional services provide assessment services between the city of Franklin and Accretive Presale LLC. Common council may enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty five sub one sub E for competitive and bargaining reasons to deliberate and consider terms relating to the agreement for professional services to provide assessment services between the city of Franklin and Accretive Presale LLC entered into on February seventh, twenty twenty two and the performance thereof and the investing of public funds and governmental actions in relation thereto and pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty five sub one sub G to confer with legal counsel for the common counsel who is rendering advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved and to reenter open session at the same place thereafter to act on such matters discussed therein as it deems appropriate.
Motion to go into closed.
Second.
We have a first and a second. I'll do roll call, please.
Alderman Pecorelli.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ikman.
Aye.
Alderman Hassan.
Aye.
Alderwoman Day.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye. Five ayes, no noes, one absent. We are slowly going into closed session. Yes. She knows. Tell me when. Okay, it's uh nine zero six PM. We are back in open session. Is there a motion? Would you please read the motion, Madam Clerk?
Motion is to retain the Rose Group and to proceed as discussed in closed session.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First and second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.
Can't.
No.
That's right.
Look at you.
Wow.
You had your Fritos, you're all ready to go. All right. Uh, we're going to H's and Henry licenses. Who is doing licenses tonight? Alderwoman Ikman, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you. This evening, Alderwoman Day and I met. Alderwoman Craig was absent. We met at five thirty for the license committee meeting. The first two operators that are new were approved. The third and the fourth operator new, um, last name Nicolik and Radke are approved upon correction of application. Then we have the next two new operators, one for the hideaway, one for the point after. Those are both approved. And then the last applicant, we, Alderwoman Day and I would like to approve pending advice of the city attorney. Which we may run that past due now, or we may run that pass due later. We just have a legal question, basically.
Is it?
Yep, go ahead. You got the floor.
Alderwoman, did you bring that folder in?
Uh, I, I did not, but I, I remember the.
Alderwoman Day, you got the floor.
Uh, so for, this is a change of um onsite manager for um the entity here. Uh, the police report, and I can have the city clerk chime in if I misrepresented anything as well, um has a charge from approximately ten years ago, um, a felony charge that was uh pled down to a misdemeanor. Um, the police department has looked at it. They are not overly concerned, but the nature of the misdemeanor uh gave us some concern, given that this is the onsite manager for a mobile home park, um, and it was involving, um it was involving a minor, so um.
He does live in that.
And then the minor lives there as well?
No.
Oh.
The thing that happened, that was years ago. The gentleman who's gonna be the manager lives in that mobile park.
Yeah.
Which is more of a concern.
Yeah, so the, the concern was if, if this was an appropriate.
His children will also be residing.
Hey, hold on. So it's a misdemeanor conviction.
Yes.
All right, so why don't we have the city attorney check into it? He can report back when we hold on that one.
Okay.
Okay, how about that?
That sounds great. Then at five thirty nine, we adjourned.
Excellent.
Alderwoman Day made the motion. I second it. Thank you.
Well done. Is there a second on the?
Good.
To approve, seconded by Alderman Day, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Moving on to vouchers and payrolls, item I is an item for points as normal. City vouchers with ending date of October thirty first, two thousand twenty four, the amount of five million forty seven thousand six hundred and seventy nine dollars ninety eight cents. Payroll dated October eighteen, twenty twenty four, the amount of four hundred eighty four thousand, four hundred and sixty four dollars and seven cents and payments to the various payroll deductions in amount of five hundred and ten thousand one hundred and forty three dollars and twenty five cents plus city matching payments and point three payroll dated November first, twenty twenty four, the amount of four hundred and sixty nine thousand, one hundred and ninety two dollars and twenty cents and payments of the various payroll deductions in the amount of two hundred and forty nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety five dollars and seventy five cents plus city matching payments and final point, estimated payroll dated November fifteenth, twenty twenty four, in amount of four hundred and ninety thousand dollars and payments of the various payroll deductions in the amount of five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars plus city matching payments. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
First and second, roll call, please.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderwoman Day.
Aye.
Alderman Hassan.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ikman.
Aye.
Alderman Pecorelli.
Aye. Five ayes, no noes, one absent, motion carries. Mr. Barber, do you have a motion?
Let's go through this one. So move to adjourn.
We have a first and a second by Alderman Pecorelli, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. We are adjourned. Let us know when. Well done, everybody. Got a lot done.